Phones. I'm going to call the meeting in order, it's still at four o'clock. I think it's down from the floor.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
There are no seats in the back row, Mr. Robinson, you'll have to sit.
Okay.
So, there I go. So, my bad.
Come on.
Okay. You're hearing motion to adopt the consent agenda.
I so move.
Oh, second?
Yes, make the second. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I hear motion to adopt the consent agenda.
Uh, I move that we accept the consent agenda as public comment.
Second?
Oh, second.
Go ahead.
One or two second?
All right.
Aye. Okay, move down to public comment. Says you may address the council on item, on the agenda or not. Please state your name and address. In the public comment, on item.
There it is. I, um, Lisa Cahill and myself, Melanie Buzini, have something we would like to propose. Melanie Buzini, uh, 513 Center Street, Lakeview. Uh, Lisa will give the presentation, but I would like to help her in any way. We would like to rename the Bullard Canyon Trails to the Noni Vandenberg Trails. If possible, um, the county will help with whatever we can do to make that happen. Um, we have invested interest since we've been, um, put Title III monies towards that. Um, we can help install signs, and Lisa has lots more information.
Thank you, sir.
So, I'm Lisa Cahill, well, my address is 22776, Highway 395. Welcome. So, um, we've kind of been working on this project through the Honor Society in Lakeview, through lots of teachers, most of you know. Noni Vandenberg was tragically killed a couple of years ago while on her bike. And she rode the, and the trails up Bullard Canyon, it was her favorite place to ride and to run, and so we're proposing basically to rename the Bullard Canyon Trails, the Noni Vandenberg Trails. Family and friends will do, will pay for the signs, so it will be no out of cost to the county or to the city. They basically are saying that for liabilities purposes, the big signs at the gun range and at the pool may be placed, or probably placed by, um, town and/or county workers. And then the Honor Society will, uh, we're looking at probably putting signs, or better marking the trail up on the, um, trailhead and up further up the canyon. We're also talking to their agency to see if we can go all the way up to Roger Meadow, because we'd like to go ahead and continue that whole path now and put a sign up there also in her name. So, again, county is okay with it, we just need your blessings to go forward.
We will have to put it on our agenda for our, one of our next meetings. I don't, I don't see that there would be any problems with it at all, and your, um, I guess, maintenance, does that work, what, um, the family and maybe the county and the, or how do you want that, how does that work?
Well, they're also, um, as most of you probably are aware of, um, the Trail Oregon, the Trail runs there, you know, there's a whole group now started to not only look at those trails, but also maintaining those trails, and there's also state and federal money for that too. Uh, the family is pretty committed to, to basically putting the signs up, and I'm sure they'd be committed to making sure those signs for the maintenance of that. We're hoping that basically the maintenance of that trail can be done as part of that Trail Oregon, um, tourist, yeah.
Studio.
And part of it's city, then you get into county, and then you get into?
Then the Forest Service. That is correct. I'm very well aware of that.
Have you talked with the Forest Service? They've been wonderfully cooperative so far in any of the trail things that the chamber's working on.
Yes, and, and we have talked to them, and we've also, um, it's, it's kind of a step process, they're not going to step on, I mean, so basically county has to approve it, city has to approve it, and then they really don't have a problem with it, especially if we're going to take care of the signings.
I.
It has to go through a process also, but, um...
Are you saying that the county has already taken action on this?
No.
And if they're done, or they will?
They, yeah, they, I mean, they, they haven't, nobody, it's, it's, like you said, it's kind of one of those who has priority over who, so everybody says, well, talk to them if they are okay with it, we're okay with it, talk to them if they're okay with it, we're okay with it, because it goes, basically, part of it is in, in city, part of it goes to county, part of it goes to that, or to the Forest Service.
I don't think we have any objection, our problem is, is that if it's not an item on our agenda, then we can't take an action, we can't say, yes, we approve that.
But I don't, I, I don't think it requires action to take, other than consensus that says, go ahead and do it.
We can get away with consensus.
If we don't have an ordinance in place that says, this is how we name things and it requires public hearing, then I think we just give you consensus, say, move ahead, you're getting paid for the signs anyways, but you take, or maybe a vote at least that says, yeah, we accepted this.
Reverted comments?
I don't think.
So, consensus will fulfill our, because I think it's fine. Is the current trail, it seems to me, is all on town property at the moment, is it not? Well, I know a lot of the restrooms, well, the, you know, the, the range. Up to the range.
But they're wanting to extend it.
Yes, I understand that, so, I mean, we're just voting on what we own, I mean, we're talking about what we, the, the part of the trail on our property, and, you know.
And I believe the signs.
And combined with the signs.
So, the signs are on your property.
Right.
Put it safe that way, that some of the trail is not. So, some of the trail is in the county.
Okay.
And then, so that signage that we would put out there, what direction signs, um, and maybe by post signs would be, I guess, county, and then once you get further up, and that's, you know, if, if we just go to the gun range, it's probably not an issue, although I, I don't think that the Forest Service has got a problem with it going clear to Roger Meadow.
Because the gun range releases that, the area that they use, but, you know, outside of that area is, is still the towns, so.
So, how far up does the town go?
Well. Not that far.
Yeah.
The gate, the gate.
Yep, my baby's killing.
Well, I, I know that the majority of that trail is on town property, but the very bottom of it is on private property, and Ray had an agreement with the owner of the property to allow it to go up through there, and he didn't have any problem with it, and he didn't have anything to say about the signage at that time, but it, the very bottom of that does go across a private citizen's property, right where it takes off and makes that first little turn.
But I mean, on this end, or on?
On the bottom, yeah.
Down like by the pool?
Yeah.
But I, I mean, as the signage is on property owned by the town, I think we're okay with it, you know, we just have to figure out what area is, and what.
It's a trail, it's not, we're not talking about renaming a road, that would probably have some process that we need to follow, but I think in this case, consensus should be able to be taken that we're going to allow you to change the signs at your cost.
Do you want to call?
Do you have something else?
Motion, you can just say consensus. I would just ask one question.
And I know it's Bullard Canyon, but how was it named, you know, how was the trail named to begin with, or is it just always, just, just an assumption, that would be my thing, is if the Bullard family, or whatever, was going to come back and raise some kind of problem, because I don't know how.
I think just the fact that it was in Bullard Canyon.
Okay, that's all I wanted to know.
It wasn't named after us, I mean, as far as I know, it was in Bullard Canyon all the time I lived there, but, you know, and it was, it just was built there, so we called it the Bullard Canyon Trail.
It's good, and a consensus, it should be fine, I just wanted to make sure that was not going to be a problem.
It was, you know. It's still going to be Bullard Canyon, but it's going to be Noni Vandenberg Trail.
I think that's right.
Yeah, we're not renaming the canyon.
I'm not asking that part.
Oh, come on, Lisa, next.
That's a next. So, Mary, can you call for consensus at least, but then at least check with legal counsel after the fact, I mean.
There's some problem.
But I think, yeah, consensus is.
Can you call for consensus on the, on the Noni Vandenberg Trail? Do we agree, Mary?
Aye.
You have your consensus for whether it's worth.
Do we have anything else on your public comment yet, Mark?
Mark Sula, address is 20560 Kristen Road, um, wasn't able to attend the public safety meeting, because one thing is, is I appreciate the town's support and Lakeview PD support, the reason why I wasn't able to attend is because the girls softball team is on their way up to Dayton to, to play first round, uh, say playoff game tomorrow, okay? Public comment, I just want to include that public comment that I do support the funding for an additional officer, the main thing is we need to get, we need to get 24-hour coverage for this town. As a retired law enforcement official, I know that, that the criminal element knows when law enforcement is not on duty, and that's, they're ringing the dinner bell to, for burglaries, for all kinds of crime. You could ask the officers, you know, namely Dave Stitzma, who, who works nights, I mean, it's like, all of a sudden, people just start wandering, you know, the roads and, and alleys and whatnot, looking for, for opportunities to, to commit crimes, so I support that, and, last thing is, I do not support the marijuana dispensaries, thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Anything else?
Done.
And we'll go to the guest speakers for responding to the line of.
Oh, okay. Is that, is that, okay, JB Davis, 530 Sunset Place, Lakeview, and I'm here today just to showcase a program that we're planning to do through the Community Health Improvement Partnership Program, and planning a youth triathlon training series, which would require, our planning committee would like to utilize the pool and, on two specified dates, the hand up in front of you, as well as the swimming pool, like Park, or the Lions Park, I'm not quite sure what the title of that park is, and, what is that?
The Lakeview Lions.
Okay.
Technically, the Lions.
Okay, thank you, so the, the Lakeview Lions Park, and then also the Seracemus Fitness Park, on the dates presented here, um, to plan this youth triathlon training series that we are working through, um, to offer over the course of the summer on Tuesday, Tuesdays from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m.
So, uh, for the pool rental on Tuesday and, uh, the 3rd and the August the 7th, are you, are you asking that, you have it for the whole day, or for a certain number of hours?
Thinking four to six. Four to six.
Four to six.
On that day.
You're going to irritate a lot of little old ladies here.
I know.
For the little weeks.
I know. Yes, I know, it was during the water moment, um, but what we're trying to do is offer it at a consistent time and date throughout the course of the summer, and with our, how our Fourth of July holiday falls, and a lot of different things, the planning committee felt like this was the best time period to offer that consistent time for youth to be active. And so, I, I do know that that is probably the, the biggest challenge, is with that pool rental at that time.
Do you have any idea how many people you're expecting?
Um, I think we plan over the course of the summer to reach about 70 youth. Do I think that 70 youth will be at any one session, probably not, um, but that is a pool we, we think we'll reach about that many youth.
So, um, the pool rental would only be two days out of the local.
Correct, yeah, it's only those two, um, two days.
Tuesday, eleven, Thursday, November. So, are you willing to pay rental?
Yes, absolutely.
Because, I was going to say, you, we require that you have some of our lifeguards there.
Absolutely, yeah.
Maybe need those, and that's the whole concept of the pool rental, is pay their salaries, so.
Absolutely. That information hadn't been out in time for us to kind of put those fees or anything out now.
Well, I'm not sure of that.
Yeah, so we'd like to rent that at your standard rate.
I, I think it'll be lovely, I love, first of all, love to see the pool used for almost any kind of activity like this, and we'll get kids up there that we maybe aren't reaching, and, um, and another thing for kids to do in the summer. And this Seracemus Park, I think is pretty available almost anytime, really, even, I mean, I'm assuming that there should be people could walk through there if they wanted to, not a problem. People walk their dogs there too, you may want to have a little cleanup first.
Yes, absolutely, yeah.
Again, not an item on our agenda, but I think by consensus we would say, go for
I think you should.
Yeah, okay, wonderful, thank you.
Okay, is there anything else? Okay, we'll move on to the speakers, Chief?
For those of you that don't know me, my name's William Beahan, I'm the chief of police for the Lakeview Police Department, I wanted to take this opportunity to recognize a couple of my officers, this is my team right here, including Terry Loft, who's sitting down, oh, you want to be up there? This is my team, yeah, and I wanted to recognize Dave and Mike, Terry and I are unfortunate to be on day shift, so Mike and Terry get, or I'm sorry, Dave and Mike get to go out and patrol the streets at night, so, um, here on, you remember the date, Lisa, it was the 11th of May, they responded to a man who was unconscious, not breathing at the Fremont Inn, um, and so I wrote them a letter of combination, but more importantly, they got a combination from the Lakeview Disaster Unit, so I'm going to steal the words of Lisa Cahill and read what she wrote. Uh, this is to Officer Dave Stitzma, Mike Patterson, and I think Sandra Hamilton from the Oregon State Police. Uh, on behalf of the Lakeview Disaster Unit, I would like to take this opportunity to thank you for your assistance and great collaboration on May 11th, you displayed professionalism and deserve recognition for your support and assistance. By responding quickly to Fremont Inn and providing chest compressions and breathing, the patient was able to leave the hospital without neurological deficit. Our volunteer ambulance department could not have provided that quick of response without your help. Your commitment to assist others in difficult times is not going unnoticed, we are grateful for your presence in our community and partnership you provide by quickly responding to medical calls, so thank you guys for doing that. I know that these are difficult calls, um, especially as cops, uh, my hat is off to the medical profession that goes and does this stuff all the time, uh, I'm nominally trained, and frankly, I'd rather go face down the guy with the gun than somebody having a heart attack, that stuff scares me, and I'm sure it scares these guys as well, because I can deal with the one, and it's hard to deal with the other, so I'll read what I wrote, Sandra Hamilton is not here from the Oregon State Police, but I sent this to her station command as well. To whom it may concern, I'm writing you this letter to commend you for your exemplary performance on a recent call in Lakeview, Oregon. On May 11th, 2018, in about 2,300 hours, you were dispatched to the Fremont Inn in Lakeview on an unknown medical call. The caller reported a person in room 112 was down and not breathing, you responded and performed CPR until medical personnel arrived and took over, ultimately administering Narcan, which brought the person back to consciousness, consciousness, I was contacted by Lisa Cahill, who first told me about the call and your hard work, and as Cahill told me, your work prior to medical personnel arriving was critical in saving the subject's life. She said the person appeared to have overdosed in an unknown opiate and would have surely died if not for your efforts prior to the administration of Narcan. I would like to thank all three of you for your professionalism and your timely response and care in this life and death situation, you and your agency should be proud of you and the example of each of you sets for your community and the town of Lakeview, thank you and good job, so thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you, Chief. Uh, next on the item is Stepping Fones Preschool, updated budget information. Anybody here from Stepping Fones?
Yes, that's us.
That's you?
Yes.
Okay, you're on.
Okay, well, this is kind of a surprise, I did not realize that we were actually going to be owning it up, um, I brought, um, the budget in, what, like a week? Yeah, about a week and a half ago. And it has some numbers, updated numbers, that we came up with, depending on number of students we have, and continue to grow to, so I don't know if I have time to look that over or not, but we're proposing that, at least to start with, we can cover like 200 bucks a month in rent, which I know is not a large amount, but we are just starting out, and right now, our numbers are low for students, because we haven't had the time to get signups like all the other preschools have, because we don't know where we're going to be housed. We have about one classwork right now of kids, and so, and that 200 a month would go towards the, um, 15,000 or 20,000 dollars to go, to bring it up to code, is what that proposal was, that we could pay that back to you guys in a monthly form.
I don't see anything down here for heat and water, I'm sure.
That's, we still have to look, well, we're still trying to come up with numbers, and that also depends on if we have someone housed in the basement as well, um, the numbers really base off of, if we can share costs with someone. We had discussed the heating, and they thought roughly around 150 a month is about what the building tells you, between 150 and 200.
All winter long, it'll be that long?
Um, I know, that's just another, that, that we were given, that, um, the building was usually based off of running, um, at full daycare.
What's that, Chief, do we have their?
Monitor, there's three monitors.
Three monitors, one upstairs.
So, the dance, if you have the dance studio or someone downstairs?
Yeah.
They would be responsible for that heat, is that?
We would split the cost in half with the dance studio. The power and the heat and all that.
Is the dance studio willing to work with you with, uh, since you're saying you don't think you'll use that, at least that first?
The downstairs.
The basi-
The basement?
Yeah.
We wouldn't use it for preschool. Not for preschool, we strictly would love to see the Dance Academy moved into the body.
Yeah, but are they going to be responsible for cleaning it up and for?
Yes.
Doing whatever modifications they need for it?
Um, as far as like putting their studio in mirrors and floors, I mean, yes, absolutely, we'll clean it all up and set it all up and everything.
I live right across the street, and I have a monitor, and I got to tell you, I don't get away with a hundred dollars a month in my little house, so.
That was just a number we were given, and so, that's what we were looking at, that's.
You know, stoves should be able to pull them and tell you what they.
Have put into it?
Yeah.
Might be wise to check that, because seriously, um, that sounds pretty low for that fuel oil.
There is in the one tank there, and it runs all three years, and it's a big tank, so, you guys know, because it's huge.
So, filling that thing is going to be?
Costly.
Yeah. I, I urge you to check with the stoves and, and see what, they can go back in their records and see what it cost, uh, the YMCC people, uh, what it costs for them, because you don't want to get in there and find out you have a $500 bill. Well, you know, it's going to be a lot more in the winter, because that's when you're going to need the heat, so it's going to flush away a lot during the year. Do you, do you have the second teacher hired, or do you know somebody that you'd work with?
We have an idea. Yeah, we have a few, uh, different, maybe even possibilities at that position.
We still need to discuss at some meeting the repairs that need to be done. Well, we have that in the estimates on any of the things that we.
Not other than what?
No, this won't work.
It is, is really a, a possibility for these people, though, you need to be opening in the August, September, you need to start to getting the word out, there's a lot of things you need to do, and these could be extensive repairs if we don't get moving, if we have shut them out of the possibility.
We had discussed maybe in the beginning, uh, being able to utilize the basement as the preschool while they finish the upstairs stairs and bathrooms and stuff like that, and then, so we can start our program and use the rent out back, um, and then, once, you know, all the repairs are complete, then we can move our program upstairs as planned, just so that we can, you know, get everything going.
Thank you. I think it's something we need to move on with if, if we're going to do those repairs, we need to do them timed.
We're interested in starting fundraisers and stuff to also go towards that, so, once we know we can start those fundraisers to also go, let's hope.
I don't think any, I don't, I don't know.
So, so this is where I'm at with all this, I mean, I know where you get that, and I see your numbers, that's fine, 200, obviously is not a lot, okay, as a, as a fiscal responsibility council person up there, we all have to do what's best for the city, obviously, we know we're not getting anything on that right now, and the building needs some work, it needs some repairs. At $20,000, at 200 a month, we're talking 100 months, so we're talking roughly eight and a half years to pay back our investment, okay, that's not that physically responsible for us. 200 a month, I seriously doubt you could get into any other building for 200 a month and do kind of business as you're trying to do.
We can't.
Okay, you can't, so, looking at, knowing, obviously, trying to put a dance studio in there, I'm, I'm not trying to be hard, I'm just saying, 200 a month really doesn't cut it, because we could go and say, we're going to turn that into a rental for someone, and we'd get a going rate of over $800 a month in this town for just turning it into a house, okay, so, it's a business, and it can be run for multiple businesses at once, I think it's, you guys need to look at your numbers a little bit more, and I, I'm not trying to be hard, but 200 as board, I, I know we have at least one other person that's willing to look at this as, as an option opposite of what you're doing, but I don't know if they punched out a number, but that, you know, just hearing 200, I would imagine they're going to say more than that as well, so, you know, I don't want this to get into a bid war either, but I want you to, we need something concrete, I, I do, as a counselor, will eventually vote for something to go in there, and also have to ask the manager where we're going to come up with 20,000 to actually do the improvements to get it up to speed for you guys, knowing that we're going to get repaid that later in rent payments, we have to kind of, I mean, eight and a half years, I, you may be gone in one year, and then we're stuck with the bill, yes, we've got building up to speed, that's fine, I understand that part of it, but 200 a month, just to me, doesn't sound realistic, and, and I understand you're a different type of business than, you know, housing people, because they need a house to live in, but commercial properties downtown, and I know what the dance studio is paying, and I know that she should be able to pitch in a little more than that too.
Yeah, once everything's in place and she can go into the bottom, and we do have two full classes, and we see what, you know, our budget is going to be like, then that could go up, but we don't want to guarantee a higher price, and then.
And you don't know your numbers yet.
And so, yeah, no, we know our numbers and stuff, we don't want to give you a higher number, and then have to be like, oh, sorry, you know.
So, that's where maybe it needs to be discussed amongst us, okay, do we want to bring that building up to speed? Yes. Is it this cost, do we want to incur? Yes. And then, once we have a building ready for you, and you can bring, bring people into it, what's a reasonable rate, knowing then your projected numbers, which may be, you know, able to sustain, you know, a reasonable.
We can't really work on our numbers, I can't use our numbers, and so we know that we're going to be house.
So, I really think that this council needs to decide, do we want to get that building up to par ADA, so that we can put anyone in it that would reasonably want to go into it? I absolutely think that that's something that we need to do with that asset, and I've kind of preached that in the past, so, we have to figure out where we're going to come up with that money, now, if it needs to be a resolution, and we take it from a different fund to repay ourselves late, that fund later, I know financially we can do those kind of things, so that, to me, would, no- I know financially we can do those kind of things, so that, to me, knowing that there are reserve monies in other accounts, maybe ought to be something we look at doing. And if that's something that you all want to agree upon, then we ought to move quickly. Because yes, you guys don't know what we've got and other people would be too. Regardless, we've got an asset that sits there and continues to not be used.
We need some sort of figures on what it is actually going to cost to do the things that need to do, be done to bring it up to code.
Well, we're talking about-
And who's going to do it?
Yeah. Strictly being responsible, it seems to me a little bit irresponsible that we have a, a property in that location that we have let disintegrate, you know? We need to put it back together, whether we use it for you people or we use it for somebody else. Maybe that's something we, we're right now in the budget, and our budget never looks very good, so I don't know how we can do that. But it seems to me that the town really needs to take a good look at that building and say, what can we do with this to make this an asset rather than a liability? And for you guys, perhaps, who knows? But I think that's our job.
It's not going to happen really fast either, you have to understand that.
I think what we need to do is get contractors, give us a deal on what it's actually going to cost and see what, if we verdict and, I don't know, we're going to get funds right now.
Well, you have to have competitive bids, don't you?
If it's under a certain amount, I mean, right now you can get somebody to look at it, if it's under twenty-five.
We would try to get three different quotes, and if you don't, you just have to note it, saying, well, we tried and these guys didn't respond.
What's our time grade on that? I mean, can we just say within the next two weeks we want to bid on this?
No, I wouldn't push it. And I did think of that project support or program support. We do have some funding in there that, you know, we could put into the budget, you know.
And the other thing is with this being a busy season for contractors.
We're going to grab them now, now that it's, um-
But we're not, there wasn't a whole lot. We're talking about a ramp, we're talking about fixing bathrooms.
Yeah.
And then closing that, that one closet where there's, you know, rafters showing, we need to get that fixed.
Yeah, we can take that long.
So we should have, I should have numbers for you.
By the next meeting?
Not the one next week.
Oh.
I mean, make, I don't think we can.
Let's set ourselves at two weekly.
Our regular first.
We have a man here.
The first this week.
I'm Marcus Sutton, and, you know, I wanted to mention a couple of things, you know, as I hear you guys talk. And I know being those, be responsible for money is one thing. I believe the last place in there is paying like a dollar a year. And that's not, you know, and so I, I question, you know, if you're, if it's going to sit there for ten years, ten-year lease, at two hundred dollars a month, and you guys get paid back your money plus two years. I mean, going from not making anything to making a little bit to getting it improved, getting it lived in, worked with, and I think the biggest asset of all is kids. As a citizen who is looking to put my daughter in preschool, there's not very many places around the town that I will. And with a couple of things coming to town, preschools are going to fill up quickly. Um, and I, I, you know, I was never thought this way before, but now I'm a single dad, and kids are our future. You know, and if I have to pay their heater bill, because you guys worried about it in the middle of winter, me and a couple of business owners I know will step up and pay their heater bill to, to help the kids out in the community. And as I hear you guys talk, since I've, I've been coming here, it's like, let's talk about it next week, let's talk. And I understand, but it's like, you guys talk about it next week, but nothing actually gets like, there's no plan to attack of like, next week we're going to get estimates, and then we're going to do this, and then we're going to do this. And as a businessman, I know that when I attack something, there's a plan, and you knock it off in chunks.
I think the manager just got through what she would do.
Just did. I will have three contracts, or get, try to get three closed, and our next meeting will just-
And we can't possibly be expected to do anything until we at least get those figures.
No, and well, what I was saying is after you get the figures-
Well, and we've had to have the inspections done and those people that will hear it.
So we have this moving, I think quite rapidly.
Well, if you look at other town charters around the US, they all have simple rules for renting out their city buildings. This is what we do, you know, this is the program of what we do, um.
We can probably come up with a north that's like that, but that's going to take even longer for you.
But what I was thinking, as we're sitting here trying to figure out with the construction, um, we got somebody here who could rent out, the bottom doesn't need any work. Um, what about like a year lease, get the construction done, let these girls get moved in downstairs and do their preschool, and then a year, we look at it as a whole building. Or, I mean, you know, something that you guys can make some money while the construction's going on, um. As I say, I just see a lot of, of wheels being spun here, and I just wanted to, you know, there's a whole bunch of different options. Um, you know, and, and we get, come back next week, or in two weeks.
It might be three, but, yeah, I, I think that the council has to, you know, we have a process, and government is going to move slow. I can guarantee you, it'll move slow. And I think I have been directed to get the, the information, and we will do it. And I do not believe that anytime you do construction with people in the building, it's a good idea. I've been in construction and I don't think that's an option.
I don't think the state will allow it.
Yeah, I don't think that's-
So, so we're going, we're moving forward, at least at this meeting. I mean, previous meetings, if you're referencing some of that, now, from then till now, you know, obviously, we've done some things, it's just not moving as quickly as you need it, absolutely needed to. And I, I recognize that, and that's why we're, this is a step forward, but I, I do caution you, I mean, you know, the, the budget and kids, I know all this kind of stuff, and YMCA, when they're in there for a dollar a year, that, I was a part of the council that agreed to that. I mean, I think that was not appropriate, I mean, and, and it didn't last anyways. I mean, and then it left the, you know, kind of where we're at now.
Mess that you're looking at cleaning.
So, ultimately, we've got multiple people interested, and I, and I again, bring up the fact that, you know, our job is not to take care of the kids, you know, we'll let private industries do that. We're to take care of our assets and manage a budget, and we're not doing very well at either of those things currently. And we're working towards it, even tonight with a budget meeting, just going to happen to look at, and we've talked about fee increases for other areas, you know, but if we're going to increase fees in other areas and we're not doing responsibly with the assets that we have, we're doing a disservice to everybody who now has to pay a higher fee because we're offsetting it by giving something away when others are willing at the table to pay a higher, a higher price for something that is also unneeded. I mean, you know that the rental market here i- is very low, and you could get that rented out, like I said, easily eight hundred bucks a month right now. You know, if we just said, hey, we, we're going to use this as a house now, who wants to rent it? Yeah, there'd be some upgrades that have to happen, but it's in a residential zone, it could be outright permitted to use it that way. So, that's why I'm just saying, you know, look at it, see what you can come up with, I mean, do other projections if you have to, that, you know, here, that twenty-five kids, bits of kids, hundred kids, whatever, obviously that might be way off the numbers, but, you know, hopefully we've got that budget idea in mind.
And as, as your proposal has evolved, I've heard additions to it, and one of the additions that I've heard recently is to sublet. And so, you know, that, I, I, I didn't know that you were planning-
That was in our original, yeah.
It was in the original.
To sublet the, the basement?
Oh, yeah.
I don't know that they were talking sublet, like, no.
That was a huge thing that we wanted to do, to be able to reach more youth, um, because I also teach dance and stuff like that.
The first meeting we came, there was no mention of the school of dance.
It was in our, we didn't get a chance to talk in the first meeting. So, it was in the first, you know.
It's been on the table since.
That was our plan before we came in here, so it was-
All right, can, can I ask what you were getting to sublet?
That's, we have to, Jennifer honestly wanted to see if we can move forward.
She wants an air with us before she gives us an answer, because if it's just going to keep going around in circles and it doesn't work out, then she's not going to, you know, she's waiting for us to have an answer and then she'll, you know.
And like you guys, if she, if she's not, if, we haven't rented it, and it's certainly not time, she won't move, at least for one whole more calendar year. She's not going to move in the middle of the year. But at least that's my discussion.
Look, I will get those numbers.
Yeah, we'll move forward, at least at this point we'll try to keep moving.
We are moving, it's just like a stamp, sorry.
And thank you for the update.
We'll get some bids on that. Move on to old business?
Thank you, thank you.
Just finishing a session on public safety for you.
What did you say?
I don't know.
I believe that's tabled, right? At least from a work session.
Tabled.
Yeah, we're not making a decision right now, or if you guys are consensus.
I know, uh, people were complaining about it being at three o'clock instead of later, because everybody was working, so.
So, during that work session, uh, obviously we had public comment that said, you know, yes, you guys have advertised it, yes, it's been in the paper on the radio, but they've made this suggestion that goes in the water bill. Is that a possibility that we've looked at undertaking, uh, one page, the, the survey itself? I mean, a hundred and sixty-eight people of eleven hundred different, you know, I'm your staff, I don't see why you can't just say something. Go ahead.
On the water bills, Tom has put on there that they flush the water on. People still come in, they did not see where they flushed the water was. So you can still put it on there until you're blue in the face, and they're still not going to see it or read it. They just open it up, look at their bill, and toss it aside.
But at least we can say we tried. And that's why I'm just sitting here thinking, we're going to increase a fee, which currently I'm absolutely against, for the record. I want to be able to say, when I do change my vote to being yes, that we have made sure that the public's made that comment and we've gotten their opinion, and the public opinion is that they do support it. And then, I will then say to the voting people who respond that, yes, we will, we're going to increase this fee, you're going to get the coverage that you need, although we can't cover it by just your taxes, we now have to justify it by this new fee increase, because I think that, that's most appropriate, that we get everybody reached, and the only way you reach all the people that are going to get that same water bill, and then that same water bill's going to now have a, anywhere from five to twenty-five dollar fee increase on it? Well, those are the same people. We might as well put it in their water bill, hey, if you don't respond to this, it could go up by twenty-five dollars. Hello? You know, or more. That's, that's in our, that's in our projections on our current, you know, I mean, none of you might be thinking that, but.
Like, I consider gone, I would just make-
But yeah, go ahead.
My question is similar than that, but, um, can you send out like a note with the water bill, not on the water bill, is my question.
That's what we're asking, what you're saying, is they're still, they'll have these papers and they'll-
This paper is for them to fill out in circle boxes, the same one that she just got handed today, and that not being a water bill.
That's what I'm asking.
Okay, and that's what I was asking.
Yeah, well, do we have an answer?
We can do the same thing.
I do, I do think that if we're going to-
I don't remember her giving me anything in my office. Maybe I never looked at it, about this.
We have sent this, the lady's point primarily was, I think other people should have a voice in this. And though we've tried and we've made it, what we hope is a good faith effort at it, we got a hundred and thirty-six.
Hundred and sixty-seven.
Well, not for everything, but, yeah, but the most we got is a hundred and sixty-seven, which, how many bills go out? Eleven hundred, is that what you said?
At least.
Yeah.
Some row of towns.
So, and they're not going to have to pay this, is that right?
Oh, not accounting or service.
If they want water service, they're-
No, I'm kidding, they'd wet a lot out.
No, it's in the ordinance, if you're outside of the stadium, because that's not in our police jurisdiction.
I understand her point. I don't think she understands how difficult it is to get people to respond. And maybe we make yet another, another attempt to, gravy is plain. Anyway, I, I think we make another good faith effort to say, look, you will respond, or this is going to go into effect. And I don't think we need to say twenty-five dollars, but I think we need, I, I would feel better if we gave it one more shot, in whatever way you think, but one of the things I would do is I would get on, um, the Chamber. The Chamber has their Chamber Chat. Lake County Examiner has their Friday information thing. A lot of people, we get a thousand people watching Chamber Chatter. So, you put it on something like that, maybe you'll get that. We need to go on Facebook. We need to go on those places as well as mailing them out. People pay a lot of attention to social media. And so, we need to use every avenue we have and then say, this is, response we got people.
Is that, I guess I just-
I would say that we need to, we never talked to the twenty or twenty-five or a higher fee than, than fifteen. And so, if you send out a questionnaire, I think it only scares people when they see that upper end. I think you should cut it off in the questionnaire to people at fifteen. I don't think any member of this council has proposed anything or even thought of anything above that, because, you know, with, with the fifteen, the tops, we're looking at a couple of hundred thousand or thereabouts. So, you know, and I, I don't think that we should go for that much in the public safety, because I don't think any of us would.
But when you spread this out over six officers, uh, you know, and then please, uh, fire and nine-one-one, I mean, to me, five dollars is going to get everybody upset and not going to even come close to providing us the amount of money that we're going to need to do this, if this is the route we have to go. So, I mean-
Well, that was a question I had with the current ordinance that I was, as I was reading it.
Had fifteen.
Had fifteen, huh?
Yeah.
Well, it had, no, it's not the number fifteen, because I knew that was, you know, open for debate, but is that this money is designated for a police officer?
We talked in our meeting that it would go to police officer, and then maybe two fifty for fire and two fifty for dispatch.
But I didn't get that when I read the ordinance.
I can see-
That definitely has a draft, could be changed.
Yeah, I, I understand that.
But it should be pointed out correctly.
We need to discuss that part of it.
Because I-
And decide on the beat.
I, I want to see us fund the, our officer. And if it means that, um, at, at this point in time, fire and dispatch don't quite get that kind of money, and it's not a guaranteed thing, so that we have to take two, you know, point five or this and two point five for that. But we want to fund that officer. We want to get that person up and running. And I think if, if that, if our priority is to, to have twenty-four hour coverage, then that's our priority. So I, I don't disagree with giving those, uh, to the two agencies money, but I think we need to be in a, that slippery slide where we can decide who gets the most right now.
I think the ordinance needs to read so that we can decide that without doing another ordinance. And, and maybe even seven fifty or something like seven dollars in between. Anyway, that's, if we're going to really-
Well, that's where I think this needs to be broken down as to what it would actually provide for people and let the people know that that's what it's going to be. This, the survey doesn't really tell me anything, other than you're asking for more money and you want to provide a service, but at five dollars, you need to tell them that that won't provide you the service you actually need, so. To break it down and say, look, to provide a police officer, to give any salary increases to people, give nine-one-one some money and give fire some money adequately, we're going to need fifteen to twenty dollars an hour. And then if we wanted to be- No.
It's going to bill.
They have a bill.
So, and then from that, then we'd say, and we would like to put some in reserves so that we can actually think about the long-term effects of every cost increase going up, and we better just go for the highest thing and try to put some into savings. I mean, this is a one-time shot to me. I mean, we're not going to see it go up. I mean, I'm not sure what your studies showed from the other communities, what they're doing, um, you know, there's a little bit in our packet about it, but, you know, once we've set a fee, similar to when we set the larger tax, we, it's going to sit there for a long time and not going to touch it, you know? And so, if we can look on a five to ten-year, uh, look, and look, and say, look, down the road, this is what we're needing, we better do it now. If we're going to upset everybody, that's my point. If we're going to upset everybody, that's my point. But I just want to see the numbers, I want to see the proof that this is where we have to go because of the way we are financially set. And, you know, obviously we have a budget time, and I encourage anyone who watches these videos to jump on, be on our budget board. But we need people to step up and make the tough decisions, and we're having to do that. This is a tough decision that I'm still not for, but I want to be at a yes, if we're going to get, and guarantee that we're going to get, the service that we're going to be then therefore paying for.
Five dollars brings in sixty-five thousand, is it?
And eleven hundred accounts. If that's how many accounts are really out inside city.
Well, there's taxes and then all the other stuff we pay, that's not enough for a new officer. And if you go out and tell people we're raising their bill for by twenty-five dollars, then, hey, I only have a few months left, but the rest of you might be looking at recalls.
Yeah, but if we can justify it, that's why I'm saying, I mean, I want to be transparent as much as possible, as I think the rest of you would want to. So if it goes in the water bill, and it's clearly explained, hey, we've been looking at these things, you know, the voice has been, maybe it's not the survey, maybe it's just that, hey, and then come to this meeting, because we're going to vote between number fifteen and twenty-five.
Or incent them by... Telling them where they can pick up the survey. I mean, I know we've already done that part of it, but do it again. And if they wanted, and I never heard of that survey thing on the council. It, it would think, monkey, whatever it was.
I filled it out while we were sitting here, by the way.
Well...
In the work session. It's easy to find, you just have to go to the website to find it. It's very tall, click it, fill it out in three minutes.
You have to go to the website first, which I am.
And people don't, but I'm just saying, the water bill, they will see it.
But I saw it up there.
They will see it in the water bill. And I just, the survey may not, like I said, I mean, if we had kind of an explanation, but it'd be nice to know from not just police, but fire and nine-one-one, what you really intend to do with this money. Because it's the public's money, and we're needing to now spend it. Well, how we're going to spend it, I think we need to make sure that they know where it's getting spent. And not that it's just going to be added to our general fund, and wasted at the pool for, you know, forty thousand in the hole every year.
I think the response that you got for the public safety survey on Survey Monkey was phenomenal, really, for this size community. I don't think that you'll get more responsive till you start hollering how much it's actually going to be. So, till the council decides that amount, I wonder if we should be sending out anything.
It doesn't seem to me that, the one thing that Darwin said that really resonated with me, five dollars is going to raise sixty-five thousand. It is not enough for us to hire the policeman that we promised with this increase. So, why bother? I mean, you know, so we go for ten, that's a hundred and thirty thousand. Does that cover at least a police officer? And maybe something that, a little bit for the fire, a little, you know, if there's things they absolutely have to have, we can help with. But I don't see that we can go less than ten. And maybe people won't like that, but that's what it's going to cost, is to at least get one officer. And that's a hundred and thirty thousand dollars that's going to come in hopefully every year, so we can sustain that position. Because I think that's the other thing, it's going to take us two years at sixty-five to get somebody that we can hire, and then next year, we're going to be short again. So it doesn't make any sense to me to go, if we're going to do it, and we're going to take the flak over it, let's make it count. So that it really can do what we're saying we want to do. Am I off base with that?
No, I don't.
I agree with you.
I think we need to, yeah, I was, I thought we're probably around ten, but not twenty-five.
No, I think that's too young.
I think it's asking too much of people whose incomes vary a lot in this town, and a lot of them aren't real high, let's put it that way.
That definitely gave everybody's attention, ten twenty-five.
I don't see asking for less than what we can...
I would go with ten. And that would definitely fund a police officer, and would still be able to fund the fire and nine-one-one.
At least a little bit.
And maybe that's what, once we funded that, then what we do is we do take that money and set it aside so that... Because it never seems to me that anything that the fire or the dispatch need are very cheap. You know, they need big things. And so maybe we start to fund then, that does, that there are possibilities out there. We've also got our taxes coming in, which we have no idea what they're going to be, on the motels. And we haven't as yet dedicated that last thirty percent. So, you know, maybe that's an option for some years, for us to use that.
Well, I think that there will be additional funds for the town of Lakeview, perhaps in all departments. But with the Red Rock, there's the community service fee that we'll start to see after they're operational, which is going to be the year 2020, and we won't see anything probably till one full year ago, by so 2021. But we can't wait for our police department to be enhanced, and other services to be enhanced. So we can delete the fee at any time, when we have other fees that are coming in to take care of those, or to subsidize those. So that's something we need to think about, but those questions of why, why can't you use some of the Red Rock money that's going to be coming your way, well, that's a long ways off.
And you recall the amount?
Hundred and sixty-five.
Hundred and sixty-five is what it's...
I believe it, yeah. And it increases...
Five, ten percent every year for fifteen years.
And then, you know, as we...
Got a sheet that's...
In next Tuesday night, we have a public hearing on the annexation. But we're going to be in, you see, Red Rock and Cattermas Road, and then Clear North on, you know, with the solar. And those are additional areas you'll be covering, you know, so there's, yeah.
Is that instant access, or is that fifteen-year taxes?
That would be on a yearly basis, but it's going to take a while to get the taxes rolling in, once again, if you're...
You heard numbers, what, a year ago, maybe more, about the annexation from Roberta East? And, you know, the number was over sixty-five thousand, I mean, you know, from tax revenue generated from that, so...
It helped a lot.
But I'm not sure if that's really what's happening in this annexation. You said Roberta Road just now, but are we really talking Roberta Road East, and everything that's inside of it?
Roberta Road, I understand, everybody's already signed the consent to annexation.
I mean, we're having an hearing in a week, but we're talking T U V Streets, S as well, I mean...
I think there's still a lot.
What about that little island in the middle that the, the only people who have, making lots of money, are still county?
They're still county at this point, because I do believe in our discussions, S Street is not going to be annexed yet.
Well, the county didn't give their blessing, but by ultimately doing Roberta, you've gotten all the rest of them. S is still within Roberta, so...
But my understanding is still had to do a special annexation for that portion?
Because stop halls and money also...
I don't, I don't, I don't think, yeah, that's how... I've been waiting for it.
I don't think there's a process.
Ag and Autumn, so three big businesses that are located in the town, have town services, but don't pay town taxes.
That's a question, you know...
And many have signed the consent to annex, and we continue to drag our feet because we wanted it all at once. And now, possibly we're hearing it's not being done.
But we're getting way off of our agenda.
It is, but it all, it all comes down to this, is that...
Show me the money.
We've been talking about annexations for a couple of years now, and to me, that sounds like the way to get the service, the fees that require the service, the amount of service that we're trying to get. And we've been waiting for this a long time, I'm just...
Meantime, we can do the ten dollars, fund it now, and if we get the other taxes coming in, and we're filthy rich, which I find very hard to believe, but at that time, we can say, oh, guys, we've taken care of it in other ways, thank you very much for your support for this last year.
And we've repealed the ordinance.
Yeah. Which is... But let's, let's get it started, let's do it.
Let's go ahead and go with the ten dollars. Is that a motion? Okay. Do we have a motion? Starting off with ten dollars.
Are you talking about actually adopting this ordinance as a minimum?
No, we're just talking about setting the fee, so that this ordinance has that...
The minimal fee.
The minimal fee.
So it has fifteen in it currently, you're just talking about changing it to...
That was, that was what our lawyer put in there, because he felt like he had to put a fee. So I would say exactly what he said, a minimum fee of ten dollars. To be added to, I think this is going to end up being a motion.
I would just say, just go ten, because a minimum scares people, like, you know, okay, what if it changes?
Just a ten-dollar fee.
Ten-dollar fee per month, per water bill within the jurisdiction. Is that a close enough, almost, motion?
Yeah. All right, do I have your second on that?
I'll second.
Open favor?
Aye.
I'm against. For the reasons stated, I think we need more information, I mean, if we need to go higher, we should discuss that and get it in writing, as to where this money is really going to be going. I mean, I know we've talked about one officer, but, you know, we also hear deficiencies within nine-one-one, and fire, and, you know, if they need more money, then we should talk about that too, but...
Want to say a personal opinion?
Okay. Let's move on to new businesses. Uh, Resurrection, nine and thirty-three, Ward Second Street, Waterline Fargo. And that bid is an amount of eight hundred and seventy-two thousand, eight hundred and eleven dollars.
Everyone worked with this construction crew before?
Never.
Do you know anything about them?
Daryl had very limited knowledge of them, they worked as a sub on quite a few projects that he knew about, and performed well as a subcontractor. I have no personal... They're from Chillicothe, yeah. They have a website, they're a pretty big outfit, looks like they have nice stuff, have a pretty big crew. They met all the qualifications.
The other, what was the other big one, three?
The other one, it was Bob's Excavating from Climal Falls, which has really done an excellent job. We have, you know, quite a bit of experience with them, but they were, you know, almost, it's a little bit less than twice as much.
Oh, almost twice as much, isn't it?
Yeah.
But are we going to end up with one of those, um...
Four-quarter changes?
Yeah. I hate those things.
Tell them that.
And then all of a sudden, well, no, this didn't work, and then we tried this, and it didn't happen, so we need more money. I mean, we watched that with Head Start Building, every time we sat down with them, it was more.
That can happen with any contractor, you know, but...
And it's always an unknown underground. There it is.
I, not to, but... You feel like you have enough information on this Morello construction?
Well, somebody felt confident enough in him to bond him for the amount, so I guess they should be more worried about that.
Considering me speaking in my own prejudice, anybody out of Chillicothe, I hold in serious doubt. I'm sorry, but I do. You know, I've gone over there enough towns to be around them, I don't like their school, I hate their gym.
Okay, I know.
So, yeah. But I guess we're...
You need a motion for this? I move that we accept the bid, award to Morello as presented.
Second.
Motion's made in second. Open favor?
Aye.
Okay, move from Carrie. Uh, the next one there is your budget calendar.
Are you opposed? Sharon is opposed.
You're opposed? Oh, I didn't hear that.
Well, this is stated on the record.
So you're opposed to awarding it?
He asked to say it on the record.
I am. I think we should give it. Not just because of Chillicothe. Budget calendar? Got them so excited. Ask your secret.
Again, apologize, I won't be able to do that.
So we have one, nine, six.
Hey, maybe there won't even be one.
I have, are we going to close the meeting in a minute, or do we have more? I was wondering, I saw on this here about, uh... The water grants, interesting. Are we eligible for those things?
Yes, and we're talking about couple of different projects, you know?
Yeah.
Because we need our line of duty.
Right.
Absolutely. So, wasn't there a class thing for that?
Uh, there, yes. It says, uh, there's going to be two classes, and I saw it at some place. But it is in this organ, this city's thing, so. And then these grants are due July thirty-first, so we have to move on that, if we can come up with a plan to get some money.
Well, then... I'm still with that master plan, I think. So, well, do we have to do that? I think we have to have an ultimatum for that quarter, and say, I did have it on my desk right now, but we're going to start outsourcing things. That would be my...
Yeah, we talked about that last year's project meeting.
Yeah, yeah. And, um, it's because we pay him every month, and he puts us last on this list.
Okay, I will have that decision if I have to.
And I think, no, I don't know, do you want a consensus on that too?
I agree.
Anybody disagree with giving an ultimatum to finally get this to us on a certain date?
You'll need to turn it that way, but, yeah, just tell them we need to see it.
Okay.
But then, I think she has to give them a date to say, if it isn't then, then we can outsource, yes. Okay.
I can do it.
Okay, well, I have one more thing. The Saturday Market is planning to move for the season to the parking lot behind the county museum. So they are working with the county to make those arrangements. So they will not be in our parking lot for this, at least this season, and maybe more, I don't know what will happen after this. One question they had was if they could use the picnic tables that are, that they've been using. Do you know, Jeff, are those the towns, or were they purchased by us?
I think they were purchased by the town.
Okay. And does anyone object to that, they would move them for the summer from the parking lot?
Or they get a storm?
How many are there up there?
Two.
Two?
I think there's only two.
I think we should leave those two there, and maybe I have another one available, and we can take one out of the big park. Or I can replace the ones up there. Quite a few people use those.
Even though the market's not there.
It's not just the Saturday Market, it's also a lunch spot for quite a few people. I can get two picnic tables down there for them, though.
That's kind of cool. Pardon me, I didn't hear what you said.
I will get two picnic tables down there for them.
Okay, well, I will tell, um, Amanda, Amanda O'Brien to be in touch with you about getting two, but we will leave those there.
They start in June, first of June?
Well, they will not be up there, because they were thinking of June seventeenth, I thought that at one time that was going to be the opening of this swimming pool.
This is sixteen.
The sixteenth, are you still having the, the...
I thought the pool's not open, oh, because we don't have kids out.
Right, we will have the free day on the sixteenth.
Okay.
And then they'll have the tri-tip sale for the swimming people, for the swim team.
Okay, so it'll be...
So all the activities will be there.
It's a Saturday day, yeah, okay. Because, um, okay, so that is still going to happen this year.
I wasn't sure about the...
And because Saturday Market does want to be there for that, when they, you know, they always are along, but Dennis Court's there. And then, I think the next week, they will be at Daily Days, so they will not be able to be there until the end of June.
Okay.
In a new spot.
So are we having the big town party, or is it just other people are going to use that?
Yeah.
Last year, we had absolutely no, no, we ended up with what, I don't even know, a hundred dozen cookies left over.
There were cupcakes, and we had over a hundred left.
We had no, I mean, minimal.
I don't think we need to do...
We don't think we need to do that.
But the free pool thing is very important, and then other people can sell things, vendors.
Yes, so vendors will be there.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you very much, I have, I'm done.
I feel really, in your manager's report, how's the pool doing, are we getting outfits, are we going to have a staff?
Actually, we just hired fifteen or sixteen. We have the same, Nathan Scott was here last year, and he will be back as head manager, and then they have an assistant manager, like he did last year, help with coverage, we didn't work... manager, like we did last year, help with coverage, uh, we've been working with Jennifer, and the classes for lifeguarding certification begin at three P M. on Friday the eighth. Saturday and Sunday, ninth and tenth, will be, um, lifeguard training, Monday morning will be open up the pool, and then we'll have it open...
The eleventh.
Open on the eleventh, but the official party is, you know, the day will be on the sixteenth.
Saturday, the seventh, sixteen.
Excellent news, glad to hear it, seemed like it took a little longer last year to open.
I think it did, so it was a nice one.
And then we are, Jeff and I, I work you and Daryl on that heat exchanger, and Jeff has been running the pool water up there, the geothermal, it's running about, what, ninety-two?
Almost ninety-two, yeah.
Yeah, so we're gonna...
So, you mean there'll be warm water?
Yeah. We're, we're gonna have to put in a heat exchanger.
That might change on numbers and swims.
Sure might, yeah.
And then, with that warm water coming in, and the heat exchanger, surgery and everything, it should keep the temperature up, so...
That's not gonna be finished when it opens.
Oh, I'm glad to help.
Do we have a swimming coach?
I don't know, about swimming.
Because we don't even have it yet.
The exchangers.
We don't have the heat exchanger, and it needs repairs, so it's...
Is it on order, or...
No, it's a used one.
It's a used one, we're getting from Modoc.
From Modoc, yeah.
Do we have, uh, covers in good shape?
We have the same ones we had last year, they're...
Okay, is optimistic.
And in the grant that we, you know, put in, you know, that covers the heat exchanger, the pool cover, redoing the, uh, dressing room areas, that whole area, put a new roof on that, and then doing the splash park, and on the twenty-something of June, there's a presentation in Salem.
Did you say you would, you would deliver the picnic tables to down there?
Yeah.
And I will tell her to get in touch with you when they're ready to open them.
Are they gonna want their little storage building, the new...
They said they would move it.
Okay.
I don't know how, but they did say they'd move it.
Good.
So, you're off the hook on that one. But, yeah, they do wanna take it, and otherwise, they'd have to cart those, um, canopies down there every week, and that'd be too difficult.
For the good of the order, I guess, um, May thirty-first, there is a ribbon cutting ceremony for, uh, Top Shelf Dispensary down here on F Street. I, I don't know, I still don't know the status of the other one. Has OLCC signed off, then why is the other one doing what she's doing?
I have no idea, but I'll...
Why aren't you resting her?
Not even following our ordinances, because she's not...
No frosty windows, it's not open yet, we really, I mean, somebody can hang whatever they want, I guess.
They haven't followed any of our ordinances to this point.
We, they're, they're not saying...
No. They haven't got the frosty windows, and, and adequate, no, superior ventilation. So, those were two very main things that are ordinance, ordinance, so if they open without those two things, then is it within your jurisdiction?
I don't think so. I might have to read down ordinance, but I don't think any, I don't think any of the town ordinances are unclassified misdemeanors, if they're violated, I think that they just sort of ended midair, from the ones I've read, to this point, there's not really an enforcement piece.
Other than OLCC.
Unless you see a Roberta, 'cause I am not.
But I didn't think anybody could...
Other than OLCC.
Other than OLCC.
Ability to pull a license.
Yeah, but I look at pull a license, but as far as being able to go take somebody off of the pokey for it.
Not likely.
Really?
I was so hoping.
Since you brought that up, Sharon, that, and, and I put a comment, maybe he should have been here a couple of years ago, when we made the decision to allow dispensaries in our community, at that time, it would have been a little more timely to, to comment, he didn't like the dispensaries coming in, but since they are going to be a reality, and I have heard from the owner of Top Shelf, he's received his, his approval from OLCC to the degree that he still needed a fire inspection from the state fire.
He has had that.
He has that, okay, so I think he's, he's about ready to, to open up, and due diligence has been followed, and, and he's met all the obligations, I think, but the one thing that I wanna take the council back to is my cry back in the year two thousand fourteen, and that is, if we're going to allow them in our community, we better get something from them. And so, we, once again, I'll make it a point to holler, as I did in two thousand fourteen, and fell on deaf ears with our legal counsel and management, to make sure that on our ballot, this November, we will have, and we have, we have to vote on the amount, too, beforehand, the council has to decide on the amount.
Oh, good, that should all take us.